Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 11th, 2022 Georgia Vet Meeting. Do I have a motion to return to public session? Monica first and Rush second. And I will call the meeting to order. And ask if we have a motion to approve the minutes from December 7th, 2021. Alec first and Jennifer second are in favor. And it's approved. And now a motion to approve the November Treasurer's Report. Monica first, Mike Keith is second, and I see all in favor. And it is approved unanimously. We have recognition of community. Victoria, would you like to take that?
Yes, I'd actually like to ask Kyle Poacher to turn on his camera and talk about our students and their recognition.
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening. I am pleased to share the news that our Academic Challenge Team placed first in the MCC Tournament held on December 12th. Students on our team include Bhavani Gopal Krishna, Justin Hugh, Daniel Kim, Arya Kumar, Iris Liang, and Ryan Powell. Congratulations to our entire Academic Challenge Team and their advisor, John Scutaro. I also want to take a moment to recognize one of our seniors, Justin Wood. Justin earned first place in the 198-pound weight class for 16- and 17-year-olds at the U.S. Powerlifting Association Competition in Massachusetts over the winter break. Justin broke and set 10 New York State powerlifting records in his age group and weight class. During the competition, he squatted 413 pounds, bench pressed 264 pounds, and deadlifted 523 pounds. With these results, Justin is currently the number-one powerlifter in New York for his age and weight class in the U.S. Powerlifting Association. Justin has also qualified for several national powerlifting competitions, including a competition in Australia in October. Justin, your hard work is paying off. Keep it up. Congratulations. And back to you, Victoria.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other appreciation of communities?
I'll hold back from commenting on what Justin did. I say minor power weight for myself. That is just really extraordinary. By saying that he has the national record in his weight class for all ages, and that to me is just absolutely staggering and impressive. Congratulations to all.
Congratulations.
Acceptance of gifts. Yes, two gifts.
I'd like to ask the board's approval of two gifts. One from anonymous donors requested for Edgemont Athletics in the amount of $14,450. And to the Edgemont School Foundation for a grant for Sealy Place, the Gray Biography Project, for $497.80.
Do I have a motion? Monica Keith is first with Jennifer second. And I see we have all in favor unanimously. Thank you enormously to our donors anonymous. And may you are deeply grateful to you all. Next up is Superintendent's Report.
Yes, great. I have two quick updates before I turn it over to Michael Curtin and Paul Garofano. Just briefly on health and safety update. The last 20 days have certainly been by far the most challenging for us regarding contact tracing. As of yesterday, 224 faculty, staff, and students tested positive over the past 20 days. So that was about 10%. About half were prior to the break and about half since we returned. But most did test positive over the break. We are committed to being open. We are committed to being in person. And we did return from the break with a renewed attention to our multi-layered mitigation strategy, most importantly masking and social distancing. I also want to thank everyone for participating in the weekly testing. Last week, we did have a record number of people who were testing. And I just wanted to share our consent rate at this point with the board. It's approximately 60% overall. We have 65% at EHS have given consent and 57% in each Greenville and Sealy. So again, approximately 60% overall. So in the category of changing guidance, I know so many of you are watching the news and following CBC. And just so you know how the typical flow of information goes for us, it goes from the CBC, the New York State Department of Health, to the Westchester County Department of Health. So yesterday, we did get new guidance from the New York State Department of Health. And just before this meeting this evening, we received an update from Westchester County. And there are two significant changes from Westchester County that we will be meeting with the administrators, processing it, and then getting together a communication first to send out to work with the nurses and the staff, and then to follow up with the community. And the two changes are the reduction in both the isolation period for those who test positive and the quarantine period for those who are close contacts. It has been reduced from 10 days to five days if asymptomatic. And of course, there are many details that go around that with how to count the days and the symptoms. Since we just received this guidance, we'll follow up with the communication, as I said, with more detail a little bit later in the week. And we expect to begin our Test to Stay Program on Tuesday, January 18th. What that means is that those who are close contacts and who are unvaccinated will be able to test at school for three out of five days. So we have received tests from the state of New York. And we will be, again, specifying that in terms of the actual days of testing. But the students are required to test three out of the five days. As always, this is for asymptomatic or resolving symptoms. If students, adults, are symptomatic, please leave home. I know we have a lot of conversations back and forth about running noses. And we will continue to have all of the conversations about running noses. But please do follow our guidelines. The most recent letter that was sent out on December 29th can be found on the district website. It's in the Quick Links COVID Communication. And that's where the most accurate, up-to-date information about symptomatic students can be found. Regarding vaccination clinic, we are having a next vaccination clinic. We'll be sending that out on January 22nd. It will be the COVID-19 vaccine for ages five through 11, first or second dose. Ages 12 plus, either the first, second, or booster. And for immunocompromised ages five plus, there will be a third dose available. We have this space so that we'll be able to have two sections. So also, there will be availability for people who are looking for COVID testing in addition to vaccinations. That'll be on January 22nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We did have one clinic over the break. And we did have 15 people tested. And about 160 people were vaccinated during that last round. So Ryan, I think I missed anything about a update?
No, I think information regarding both of those two changes forthcoming. Hope to get them off the ground as soon as we can. And early next week at the latest.
Any questions from the board at this point on any of that?
Yeah, just around the Test to Stay Program. That also applies to teachers and faculty as well.
Correct, correct. I didn't have a question. I just wanted to comment. You know, today, for various reasons, is one of those days when it really hit me what a really long road this has been and what an incredibly heavy burden it has been. I'm tired. I'm guessing the teachers are tired. I'm sure you're tired. And I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the community, the teachers, but also you guys, the administrators, for all the work, the endless work it's been. And like I said, today's just one of those days that it hit me. And so I wanted to say something. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. It certainly has been a lift. I can't thank the teachers enough, the staff enough. They definitely are on the front lines and talk about heroes. And keeping schools open has taken an entire community. So we're appreciative of all of the faculty and staff, all of the administrators, all of those who are home contact tracing and making those home calls right now. And to the administrative teams, thank you for the recognition.
I'll just echo that. On basically talking to the community that there should be a huge sense of gratitude and pride in what the teachers and admin have done. And I just want to not act as a board, but within the community and say that it's generally our huge sense of gratitude. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, administrators.
I would open that on behalf of the board as well, for sure, for everybody. Victoria actually have a question about the clinic on the 22nd. You'll send out a sign-up link for that or people just show up?
No, I will send out a flyer which has a QR code to sign up.
And it will be at EHS or S?
Yes. Another question? Just a very brief update on the district goal progress. By the end of January, all three district committees will have met. The educators' component of the committees have been meeting. And the idea is to share that work and some drafts and to engage the rest of the district committee in that discussion for feedback and for additional input. Also, tonight's agenda is Stacy Williams. She is a consultant who, well, we have interviewed a number of consultants to help us with our diversity, equity, and inclusion policy in terms of the implementation and procedures associated with that policy, but also to do some training for teachers. We're targeting the middle level we're looking at. And like, I will talk a little bit more about that this evening. But she is on tonight's agenda. We expect her to be able to give us feedback on the action plan, but also to her in the trainings. So with that.
Just thinking, just a quick update in terms of staffing. I think coming out of the break, obviously, as Greg said, we get a number of people that's positive, number of people that's close contacts. Staffing was challenging, to say the least. We are seeing some resolution to that. It's been an interesting, it's been very localized to individual schools where the challenge has been. And so I think Sealy was in a really good position early on. And they've maintained that. The high school had some challenges, and I've started to resolve those. Greenville was our most difficult staffing situation coming out of the break. But we'll make some significant strides today with people being released from quarantines and isolations. As of today, prior to the meeting, we have 15 staff members who are out as positive. And of them, I believe four are teachers and three of which are classroom teachers. Others, you know, filling different roles, almost in district-wide positions as well. So we're starting to get to a point where we have some more normalcy. And we hope that that trend continues. Right now, it's not to say there aren't others out for other reasons or has close contacts. But simply from that group of 10% that Victoria highlighted before, we've really seen some significant progress the last two days.
Ryan, is that what led in part to the decision to call an emergency day last Wednesday for the full day as opposed to just the delayed start?
Or Victoria? So people were not able to get here due to inclement weather. And because we were already so stressed with staffing, that additional staff, which was by the majority of the staff, were not able to make it here for the delayed opening. So maybe if we were able to do a four-hour delay, but we definitely could not get here in the two hours.
You know, I wanted to highlight that because I wanted to point out just how stressful the situation has been for you all, but for the teachers as well, for those who have not tested positive. And even for the, obviously, for those who have it's their own level of stress. But for those who remain in the buildings, the additional burdens of having to step up and help out and you all as the administrators too. I just, I wanted to recognize that small piece of what you are juggling.
I think your point, even aside from the two snow/ice days we had last week, each day we are doing staff analysis. We had a critical shortage. And is there any risk of us not being able to, under any greater means, be able to open and provide that opportunity for students? And I think it has pushed us to really think about that. And we've had some low attendance numbers and realized we can do this in creative ways still. So that's still kind of our North Star in trying to make sure that each day we can accomplish it.
We appreciate the creativity.
Well, and the teachers who agreed to take on extra classrooms and to cover for their colleagues.
Absolutely. And to trades or do an tremendous amount of work substituting for teachers who are out. We have teachers, you know, working from home. And we have supervision in the classroom by other colleagues, something else. So it has certainly been all of the units and everyone's work since then.
Ellen was like, can you address the substitute situation?
So thank you for asking. We need substitutes. So many community members have reached out previously, and we did follow up. Some people were able to come in and help, but we are very much looking for substitutes. Please contact Amanda DeFons in the district office. She will be reaching out. We'll send something out as well with a summary of the board meeting asking for all hands on deck in terms of substitutes. Thank you.
I think we're up to.
Great. Yes, up to Michael Curtin?
So as Mike's getting settled in, and Mike, you just have to turn the, just switch on the controller there. Last time we met, we outlined the budget development process. It was so long ago already to us, or to me at least. We outlined a lot of the known factors that we had in December and the unknowns that were still resolved. Most of those unknown, critical ones at that time are still unknown. But we, actually, there's a lot of information that will come into the next seven to 10 days that will help us start to formalize our full budgetary plans. As we spoke last time, with each session as we move forward, we'll bring in different departments to discuss their budgetary considerations. Tonight, we have two that are really at the heart of teaching and learning. Mike Curtin's here to talk curriculum instruction and the budget related to that. And Paul Garofano will speak about the technology budget and STEAM. And I think if you go back a number of years ago, technology felt like outside of that instructional lens. And it is just so integrated now into the fabric of what happens every day in classrooms that we really purposefully planned for them to be here together tonight to talk about this. What they'll speak about tonight are their budgetary considerations. Their kind of plans at this point in time. Obviously, open for a conversation and discussion with the board. And we're not yet at the point where we've refined or even come to a generalized number of what we think the budget should look like. So they'll be speaking tonight about highlights, understandings of our district goal and how it connects to their specific areas. And there'll be further conversations and opportunities to unpack these at a much more granular level, looking line by line as we get to the early March phases of our budget process. And then, secondly, I think, you know, next time we meet in February, we'll be talking a lot about staffing, both at the individual school levels, but also as it plays for other departments, district-level positions, curriculum, technology, and STEAM. We'll try to keep that kind of contained within that one conversation as well. So with that, happy to have Mike start to my curtain here to talk a little bit about curriculum instruction. You only have to queue up for the slides, right?
Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Hello to everyone out in TV land. So yeah, tonight, I'm going to give an overview of what I think we're hoping to accomplish through the 2022-23 budgets that focus in on curriculum and instruction and highlight some of the changes, shifts that are occurring. And also talk a little bit about the process just to sort of fill in the board about the process that we use in identifying what areas of the curriculum are worthy of focus and work at any given point in time. And also do a little bit of a look back too. So that's kind of what I have planned for the next 10 or 15 minutes or so. A next slide, please. I thought I'd start by just looking at what the budget, what the story of the budget was this year. This year, in terms of the six or seven budget codes that relate directly to curriculum and instruction, about $180,000 was the spend on these various things. And I'll take a little deeper dive into what that represents in a little bit. But some of the main things that we worked on this year that were sort of features of this budget were re-engaging with Jill Akers Clayton, who was a consultant we have worked with in the past at EHS on designing and implementing problem-based learning units. Jill is beloved by our teachers. She's been here a number of times. Due to COVID and other issues, we've had a two-year hiatus where we haven't worked with Jill. But she worked with one group of teachers for two days back in November. And she's going to be working with another group. And actually, we engaged with the leadership team at EHS, the department chairpersons, to have all of them attend Jill's next workshop. So we're really excited about that, sort of building capacity inside of the building to support this kind of assessment. Secondly, this year was the first year where we gave the Renaissance STAR Math Assessment to many of our elementary students. We gave it to all students in grades two through six. And what the STAR Assessment is, is a computer-based test that works adaptively as the student answers questions. It gives them harder questions or easier questions and gives us a good sense of where the kid is and collectively where the kids are in class or a grade or even an entire school in terms of their mastery of the standard. So we did one round of that in September. We'll do another round for the end of the year. We felt this was particularly important this year because math being so sequential, where each topic builds on what came before. There were obviously a lot of concerns about, well, what did kids miss or forget from the COVID hybrid remote learning time? And so we saw this as a good opportunity to use that assessment to learn more about that, to kind of target instruction. Additionally, as I think you know, on the reading side, we've been doing the Fanta-Son-Pennell Benchmark Assessment for a number of years. But we don't currently have a universal assessment in elementary school. And the STAR Math Assessment seems to fit that bill very nicely. This year, this current year, we extended use of the Science 21 curriculum into fourth grade. Each year, BOSI revises the Science 21 curriculum for one grade. And so it's been kind of rolling up since we first adopted Science 21 when we went to full-day kindergarten four or five years ago. So let's talk a little bit more about Science 21 in a few minutes. We continue to do great work with Shelley Klein, who works with our elementary teachers on originally reading. We have a reading roadmap that I'm sure many of you recall. And all of our elementary teachers have received extensive training through Shelley on how to teach in a writer's workshop format. For the last few years, we've had a number of teachers asking, well, when are we going to start it on writing? We really need to do something about writing. So this was the first year where we had a pilot where teachers in grades K2 and 5 had the opportunity to teach a writer's workshop unit. And then the next, well, I'll talk more about next year shortly. But so we're making a shift with Shelley from reading to writing. And we had three grades engaged with that this year, and there will be additional grades next year. Finally, you're very much aware coming into this year that kids were struggling with lots of different issues, academic, behavioral, social, you name it, as they came back to school. And we saw this as a good opportunity to look at the support system that we have in place for kids and how we could work with a consultant, Jim Wright. He's been helping us to identify and implement simple classroom-based interventions that hopefully head off problems before they become bigger problems. And so we've been working with Jim on that this year. Next slide, please. So very quickly, I'll just remind the board, and more importantly, the community, that we are working on our district goal, which has three components. Those components are understanding of self, which really is kind of a focus on social, emotional learning; understanding of others, which deals more with diversity, equity, and inclusion; and then connecting learning to life, which is, at its core, means kids value the learning experiences that they have here, see them as relevant and applicable to the world outside of Edgemont. And so those are all different areas that we're working on. Right now, as Victoria mentioned, we have committees working on those three components to develop action plans. Many of those action plans do include curriculum-related items. And so that's an example of where the district goals kind of drive some of the curriculum work. Anytime a teacher or someone proposes an idea for the curriculum project, we always look to whatever district goals we have to say, is this directly or maybe indirectly contributing to us moving forward on that goal? So that's an important sort of yardstick that we use. And certainly, an example of that is when we solicit proposals from teachers to do summer curriculum work. We identify right up front, like, these are the district goals. These are the areas that will be prioritized in terms of identifying which projects are funded. And so we pay a lot of attention to using the district goals as a tool to kind of inform the work that we do on reviewing and revising the curriculum. Next slide, please. So I wanted to dig a little bit deeper into this question of process. And specifically, how do we decide that X part of the curriculum is due for some TLC? And it's kind of, there's not, there's no one single uniform way that that happens. There's a lot of things that go on where we're looking at curriculum and considering the way kids' needs are evolving. What I think is a common thread among all of them is that they're collaborative and largely data-driven. So on the left-hand side of this slide, you see some of the things that the groups or activities that may drive curriculum work. So for example, Tristates comes every two years, and they leave a whole lot of recommendations. And we oftentimes act on those recommendations in terms of items in the curriculum that we should be looking at. If there is an EHS Curriculum Committee that meets yearly to review proposals for new courses, they just met back in December. We have two new courses that are being looked at for possible inclusion in the EHS curriculum. Departments here at EHS and grade levels, to a lesser extent, in the elementary schools set goals every year and identify areas that need improvement or that need reworking. Certainly, I mentioned already, summer curriculum writing proposals. A lot of the committees that we have, I already mentioned how the district goal committees are including in their action plans ideas for curriculum development. But certainly, our reading and writing committees, for example, have oftentimes, I'll talk in a moment about elementary word study and phonics, which is a good example of that. Those committees oftentimes sort of spawn curriculum projects. And, you know, review of assessment data that we have. And one thing I thought of really as I was just sitting outside is that sometimes the state releases new standards, right? And so there's new or revised standards, and we have to adjust the curriculum to make sure that they the curriculum to make sure that they align with the state's standards. I thought I would share a couple of examples that sort of show these various bullets at work. So in case of Science 21, which I mentioned earlier, when we made the move from half-day kindergarten with callbacks to full-day kindergarten, we spent a lot of time talking with the kindergarten teachers about, well, what's our, what's our vision for kindergarten? And how, what does the curriculum look like? We decided we wanted a hands-on science program. And we're aware of Science 21, which is used extensively in the region. I would say the majority of districts in southern and northern Westchester are using it. And not only knowing that we wouldn't adopt a curriculum in just one year, we actually held a series of meetings with the K one and two teachers. At one point, we had a presentation by the, sort of the creator of Science 21 to K one, two, five, and six teachers. We visited Osborne School in Rye, where they had already started using Science 21 to observe it. When I say we, I mean myself and a team of teachers. So that was an example where a shift in the schedule for the sort of broad program of kindergarten led to adoption of a new curriculum, which has since then, as I mentioned before, rolled up to subsequent grades. It is important to note, though, that there were stakeholders, teachers from many of those other grades to which it's rolled up, who were involved in the initial consultation about Science 21. The World Languages Department, in the wake of their tri-states visit, they were very interested in something that the visiting committee told them, which was, we should be looking at common assessments and common measures. And so they decided to work on something that the National Council of Teachers of Foreign Language had called the Oral Proficiency Interview, which is like a standard interview process for assessing the kid in a authentic way, understand their mastery of language. And they had professional development around that. And it changed the way that they assessed their students. And so that was sort of spawned by a tri-states visit. In the case of the Selectives Program that we have here at EHS in the English department, that was something that really came right out of the department and their goal setting. It was certainly informed, I think, by our emerging awareness that the curriculum that we teach should foreground student voice and choice. And so rather than monolithic, you know, American literature, why not give kids to look at things like, you know, race and gender in literature or persuasive writing and give them some choice about what their last two years of high school English look like? And that, the committee under Liz Scott's really excellent leadership, sorry, the department under Liz Scott's really excellent leadership, kind of took the horse by the reins and did a really nice job with myself and I think it was Devin at the time, sort of as partners, to support them. What can we, what do we, what do you need? Have you thought about this? And then finally, elementary word study. Word study refers to essentially, in Reader's Workshop, we focus primarily on comprehension and sort of a holistic view of reading. But kids need to learn phonics. They need to learn how spelling works, how words work. And so that's what word study really refers to. We went through a year-long process in the Elementary Reading Committee, where we really wrestled with which of two programs with two competing philosophies we should adopt. And that included piloting those two programs. That included presentations from the companies that made them. We, consultation with Jackie Levine, who's the literacy coordinator at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI. We visited three other schools and had a lot of, I'd say, somewhat heated debates about which way to go. And of course, one school wanted to go one way, and the other school wanted to go the other way. And we ultimately chose, I think, a path forward that makes a lot of sense and has been implemented now for about three years. Next slide, please. So looking ahead, what's on path for next year, hopefully? These are the things that I anticipate us working on, many of which really represent continuation of projects that were begun this year. It's been great being able to shift our focus back to, you know, thinking about program, thinking about the curriculum and the instruction from just last year where we were, you know, just treading water and barely so. And so, but that pace has been slower as we still continue to deal with all the stuff that Victoria described. So a lot of this stuff has more work to be done connected to it. So tiered systems of support and interventions, I mentioned earlier. The focus this year was, how do we support these kids coming back from a year of, for lack of a better word, chaos? But now we can take a slightly deeper dive and talk about, well, what are the support systems that are in place? How can Jim help us to identify support systems so that even if there's not a pandemic, but a kid is struggling, we have a sort of system for first meeting their needs in the classroom, monitoring how they're doing, and then looking at successive levels of more intensive support for that kid? This year, this current school year, we rolled out Science 21 to fourth grade. Next year, in keeping with their revision of the science curriculum, BOSI's revision, they will, they will release fifth grade. And our fifth grade, we anticipate, will also be doing Science 21 next year. We are planning to expand the use of Renaissance, Renaissance STAR assessment. As I mentioned, this year, we started with grades two through six math. We're going to add in reading next year as a, so we have a second data point to complement what we already have with the Fanta-Sin Penel Assessment. And we may start using it in the lower grades of EHS as well to kind of help us understand the needs of kids individually as well as collectively in terms of math, probably. Victoria mentioned that we are hoping to work with Stacy Williams, who is a professor at Marist College and an expert on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And she's going to assist us in implementing that part of the the action plan and then also training some of our teachers in how to respond to bias-related incidents and more importantly, how to prevent them from happening in the first place. So she'll be working primarily, at least in the beginning, with our middle-level teachers and school psychologists and then counselors. We'll continue to work with Shelley on Writer's Workshop. I mentioned that this year, three grades piloted a single Writer's Workshop unit. Those three grades will continue with more, a more in-depth use of Writer's Workshop. And then we'll take the next three grades, what we did K two and five this year, we'll take one, four, and six, sorry, one, three and six, next year. And they'll do the one-unit pilot. So we're, instead of working with three grades with Shelley next year, we'll be working with six grades with Shelley. And I'll, I mentioned that because it's reflected in the costs that we'll be, we expect to incur working with Shelley next year. And then finally, we hope to continue to work on assessment with our EHS teachers and problem-based learning and assessment, that work that I described earlier that's been so successful with Jill Akers Clayton. Next slide, please. So very quickly, the breakdown of, I mentioned that there are seven codes that relate in some way to curriculum and instruction. And this really is the breakdown, the largest portion is for BOSI Services. That includes everything from paying for My Learning Plant, which is the software we use to track professional learning, to paying for OLOS, where we do all of our hiring through. And then Shelley Klein, traditionally, she's been in the consultants line, but we are now working through BOSI's to, so we can get aid back on the money we spend on her. So she's now part of BOSI Services. So there's a big jump in the number for BOSI Services this year. That's partly because of just accounting, moving things over from consultants. And it's also because we're going to stay working with Shelley a little bit more next year and also paying for additional Renaissance STAR tests. Next slide, please. So put it all together, and I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that we spent about $180,000 this year on curriculum and instruction. And I anticipate, based, again, as Brian said, this is all very sort of, it's more than back of the napkin, but, you know, it's also not written in the good ink in the, with the fancy pen. So it's somewhere in between those two. And, you know, it looks like, based on, to accomplish various things I've outlined here, we require about $221,000, which is a significant increase in terms of percentage. In terms of the dollar amount, it's about $40,000 difference. So I think that it's money well spent. Of course, I welcome the feedback and questions of the board and the community as we continue the budget process and continue to develop the budget.
Thanks, Mike. I think just to add on to that, when we look at the line by line, we can start to see really where those increases are. I think it's also worth pointing out, it's the budget in 21, 22. One area that I think Mike pointed out when we met and we're going through the budget development process is we often undershoot our consultant line in this area. And so we have built in a contingency expenditure for consultants as well. You know, for example, tonight, we're looking to adopt some, or to get some resolution on consultant work. And knowing that we have a history of, in the curriculum instruction bucket, kind of undershooting that number, we are showing an increase in the budget-to-budget, which isn't necessarily an increase in expenditure to budget, you know, from this year. Or just smaller increase. Judy, can we pass it back to you for any questions? I think we probably take them as two groups separately.
When you break down staff development and consultants, clearly, some of the consultants are doing staff development.
So staff development, that money is specifically for the teachers who come in during the summer to develop curriculum. So that's, the $52,000 there is not to pay the consultants. It's to pay teachers who come in during the summer to write curriculums.
And if we had had a, if a consultant was working in somehow, some way with teachers or that, that would be separate. That would be a consultant bucket. So the R and C on the screen here is targeted money for teachers for curriculum development work.
Yeah, that name is a little bit misleading.
Thank you.
Yeah. So first of all, thank you, Mike, for that presentation. And I love the time you spent on justifying 22% increase. The time you spent on justifying that 22% increase. The number looks large, but given how integral it is for keeping the high standards of the school district, I must say that you have my outright vote for this because the numbers are small. I wouldn't look at 2% increase. Thank you. Second is, I love the jargon you use that which curriculum needs TLC. And, you know, given how the whole setting the agenda sounds collaborative process of talking to teachers, talking to consultants, and talking to, taking feedback, I was a little surprised by the heading of the next slide, which says anticipated challenges. So what are the challenges? I didn't get why there are challenges if it's so collaborative and it's kind of so supportive by you.
Well, yeah, the way I set that slide up initially was a little different. No, I mean, like, you know, supporting kids is always a challenge. Like finding ways to help kids who are struggling in one way or another is always a challenge. And the types of challenges that we see from year to year change. This year, particularly challenging challenge. But, you know, we become aware of new areas, you know, that's just one example. Challenges like the need for common assessments to understand as a grade level, you know, where are fifth graders, for example, in terms of their math learning, right? So we've all sort of accepted the challenge of looking at Edgemont's curriculum through a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens to understand how it supports, how it represents students from different backgrounds. And so, you know, challenges, I mean, there's always challenges. And so these are sort of more the, not solutions, but the ways that we're addressing the challenges. I didn't quite name them, but, so this is more of a focus on outputs than inputs in terms of challenges. I hope that's clear.
Thank you. I was just, you just made that next.
But thank you. You're welcome.
Can you guys make one quick comment? Thank you for bringing up the relative size of the budget. Because I think for me, over the last two years, when I meet individually within the departments and the groups, it just becomes so apparent, right? We talk all the time about how the vast majority of our costs are in salaries and benefits. And it is truly the vast majority. We think about the importance of curriculum and instruction, and we look at the amount budgeted here. When we factor in the salaries associated with it, it still falls less than 2% of our total budget. And so we do consult with a lot of people. We have a lot of programs that are ongoing. And looking at each one, none of them are cheap. But the overall cost and the impact is actually really impressive what we get out of that cost. Yeah, so before I get back to what you were saying, the word you just used is the one I would use. The impact per dollar spent in this area is so outsized compared to anything else we spend money on. So yes, I mean, obviously, I always want to be careful how we spend any dollars. But yes, to no less this point, I'm not, we said first blush, we're so much about, the percentages, dollars still, as long as we're being thoughtful about how we spend them. I think it's an area we probably all, you know, get behind, I'm not asking for horse spending, but probably justify. The other part is really, since I know we will be further on in the process, delving into more detail on these things, and also, once things are burned up a little more, it's really more of a request. And I know from, you know, we have this in lots of places where how we do our accounting doesn't necessarily how line up well to how we, as board members or community members, might think about what things are actually be done, what benefits we're actually getting. So to the extent, you know, with BOSI's, and again, we're all fairly familiar with BOSI's and why we use BOSI's for a lot of things. But you have half of your budget in one line here. Again, for counting, it doesn't, we don't care. But it'd be nice to have more detail around what that looks like. For example, I think isn't Science 21 part of BOSI's?
It is, but it's not part of that budget plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's easy enough to do. You'd like sort of an itemized list of what, what are the different services.
Bigger pieces of it. I mean, down to every dollar.
It's actually relatively few things. So I can, I can route that to you through Brian or Victoria. That's easy.
Yeah, and as you were speaking, I was actually thinking the same thing. As if we took that, you know, roughly 50% of that pie chart was BOSI Services or to replace it, put it into the other buckets where we fall, that majority falls into one or two areas. And so it is a good way to kind of tie that up, think about where are those services going? I mean, I know sometimes we get in the same discussion around, say, athletics, because some shows up in the transportation line, not under the athletics umbrella, or vice versa, depending on how you're looking at it. So, but thank you very much.
Yep, my pleasure.
So at least on this not very detailed breakdown, a lot of the, most of the items seem to be services, software, not hard goods. Based on that, do you anticipate a lot of inflationary pressure on the expenses last year versus this year or what you're budgeting now versus what might happen next year?
So wherever possible, I've gotten, you know, like a firm number from Shelley or from Brett Endy at BOSI's or whoever, you know. And where not possible, I budgeted for a 4% contingency. And we can certainly, which I think is probably a little on the generous side, but who knows in this economy? You know, but yeah, so I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about the inflationary pressures. You know, but I think that Um, you know, I, but I, I think that, um, much of what's in here is based upon someone saying, we expect the number to be X next year, you know, and so like Shelley, for example, gave us, you know, her per BM rate. She says, I know it'll be this next year. So, um, we're pretty locked in.
Um, so just another quick question again, talking, it really talks even more to the fact that looking at our overall budget, this is relatively small, since half of it is BOSIs, and BOSIs is ADEABLE. In what kind of range, I know it's service by service, but they're sort of, you know, certain services tend to be in the, you know, ten percent range, somewhere in the twenty-five percent range. Sort of where does the BOSI stuff for this tend to fall?
I'm just actually, sorry, more elementally, since I don't know if every family who may be watching knows what BOSI stands for, what it is, like, there's a reason why it's half, and I just thought maybe that would be helpful to people to understand why that's.
I can take Mike's turn. So, so BOSIs is a Board of Department of Educational Services across the entire state. Almost every district in the state is a component member of ADEABLES. We are members of the Southern Westchester BOSIs. However, you may see across a number of different, um, organizations, uh, consultant work that we do partner with other BOSIs as well, by kind of like piggybacking on the services that they provide there. Uh, the purpose of the BOSIs is to share costs in order to be able to provide opportunities that districts would not otherwise be able to do, as would be cost prohibitive. Could be programs per student, think of a highly specialized, uh, special education program, or a occupational education program, or could be services that they are offering to us, whether it be our network support, um, that is just really difficult to, to manage, um, in isolation on our own, or whether it be consultant work, or curriculum development, or teacher training. Um, there's really limitless number of things that, that the most, our Southern Westchester BOSIs offers to us. We take advantage of a number of them, and, and you'll see across the whole budget, uh, season, a lot of those cases where we are targeting as much of the department's funds to BOSIs for the very reason that we do get state aid back on. Uh, aid does vary, it depends what it is. Uh, the rate setting on that, I, I don't even, I'll tell my head, I wouldn't be able to put the number exactly to each of the line items here. Um, but it is also worth, sharing all the positive on the BOSIs with the partners. If, if, if you were to shop on your own, prices might be a little lower, but on ADEABLE. There, there is a net benefit for the district, uh, but it is not an equal, we're not getting the same rate, right? BOSIs pays, if they choose a rate that works, knowing that they are going to get a part of that, and that we are going to get aided, so it is to the benefit of us. The few districts that do not partner with BOSIs, that will be their argument, that I think can shop for these rates on their own. Um, it's just not been in our interest, we, we find it a valuable, uh, partnership that we have ongoing right now. Um, you know, I think a neighborhood of almost twenty percent in these cases is a, is a good estimate for these services. And to your point, though, we do still shop these services. Yes, correct, many, many, many times, it was. There are many things that would. On the side, our cert, your qualities of the cert, services of the quality that we're looking for, once you factor in the aid, economically, have been papers to go with. And I think the maximum, one of the, the, I think the critical one for us here is taking the Reader and Writer's Workshop work with Shelley Klein, packaging it in BOSIs is an important thing. In this year, we're also, we have shifted that accounting, um, so that we can get aid on the service that we're providing, rather than being it on second consult. Um, and, and sometimes as a district, you have some leverage to try to, to be able to get consultants to, um, work through BOSIs in order to be able to provide us that aid on, on the services.
That's what we did with Shelby. Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we basically, we had been working with her for several years. We said, would you consider, you know, working through BOSIs so we can get aid? Her per BM rate doesn't change, uh, but they have an administrative fee that, that represents that extra cost, like, and so, um, but it's offset significantly by the aid. So in the end, it, it winds up being gratuitous to do it this way.
Just to go back to the, uh, inflationary aspect of, I think, Mike's budget itself less effective than what Mike here from Paul released, the software, um, programs and teachers are invested in. It's a little bit different in different areas. It's certainly different than what John McCain presented regarding facilities, where we'll see the largest, um, increase in that. The goods, the manufacturing, uh, labor, those costs is where we're seeing the, the most significant of the, you know.
Moneykeeper. So I just have, um, I guess, two, um, questions, and then the one, um, just follow up. So, um, how do we go about, in fact, you've done a lot of professional development in elementary schools, and then you can use a lot of different programs. How do we, um, go about evaluating whether or not you did enough professional development, whether people are actually executing the programs as designed and completely, where there's kind of space where people need more? Um, how do we go about evaluating all that?
Um, it depends, like, so with something, so for example, you mentioned, um, Readers' and Writers' Workshop, like, we have standing committees, a reading committee, a writing committee, and I'll oftentimes be charged with, okay, you know, go to this grade level and, uh, go back to your grade levels and find out, you know, what do you want to see more of, if you want to see less of. Um, our models of working with Shelley have evolved significantly over the time that we've worked with her, based upon the teacher's feedback, um, in terms of whether we meet for a whole day or a half day, and the spacing of those meetings. So there's a fair amount of, of back and forth in terms of the teachers having an opportunity to, um, uh, define the way that we work with Shelley. Shelley's a consultant, it's a little different for Science Twenty-One, where they have, you know, they work with, I think, eighty different districts. And, you know, they have trainings and, um, teachers go to the trainings, they like them, they don't like them. Um, and I, you know, the best that I can do, and I have done this a number of times, is reach out to BOSIs and say, hey, our teachers don't like X, and they want to see more of Y. In fact, once a year, they bring us all together and, like, what they call is the steering committee, um, they bring us all together to give them feedback on Science Twenty-One. And usually before I go to that meeting, I'll reach out to the teachers and say, what are your concerns? What are the things that you want to share at this meeting? And so, um, that's one way. I mean, judging the impact of professional learning is like the holy grail, uh, because it's really hard. And actually, I, I maybe, uh, share with the board some of Thomas Dusky's work, who talks about different levels at which you can judge the impact of professional learning. So for example, at the highest level, or the lowest level is just, you walk out of the workshop and you fill out a little survey, and like, yeah, it was really fun, you know, but does that translate then into the teacher actually understanding it? They could give them a test, I guess, to see if they understood it, right? Like, that's another level. Beyond that, are, are they actually doing it in the classroom? Beyond that, are the kids learning whatever it is they're supposed to be learning? So the Dusky levels are a good tool to think about that, but there are so many confounding variables. I'm sorry, I'm getting into dissertation speak here, but I spent a lot of time thinking about this when I was working on my dissertation, because judging the impact of professional learning is really hard, because there are so many different factors that, um, happen between the teacher sitting at a workshop, or talking to a consultant, and then actually the kid in the desk in the classroom. But, um, we do try to, like I said, use data, to, uh, assessment data, as well as reaching out to teachers. Uh, we recently just, for math, um, elementary math, we reached out to the teachers a couple of weeks ago to say, you know, uh, how are you using the digital component of our math program, Think Central, you know? Why are you not using it, or, or what do you like about it, you know? And so that's kind of in a nutshell, how we approach that.
Right, thank you. On the second piece is that, uh, some questions, um, you know, we've, we've done a lot of kind of new curriculum development, and some of them are programs. I've been hearing from parents about kind of why there's no kind of place to go to look at our curriculum. Is now good time for us to think about kind of, with all these different things, kind of creating some documentation? Is that something we could invest in?
I think that it's been a sort of a work in progress. We've put up a lot of the reading work that we did, um, we did put up a number of things about that. We've sponsored some parent workshops over the years where, um, they can learn about our science program. We did one focused on math a couple of years ago. We've done some focused on English. In terms of posting curriculum documents, someone needs to develop them. And so that's, um, a work in progress. There's a lot of sort of backfilling as we do new curriculum development. That's a requirement, but in terms of huge scope and sequence existing documents, um, they're in various states, to be honest with you, of development. And, and probably some are camera ready, ready to be on the website, and others not as much. There are some materials, um, though, about reading and a few about math as well, I think. Every department here at EHS also has its own web page.
Great. I think, to, to, moneykeeper, do I hear you asking more about kind of the parent-facing, public-facing?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think, I think, you know, during coffee night, I mean, I'm thinking about the elementary schools more than the high school, a little bit more subject-specific, right? Um, but the elementary school, kind of like you go to coffee night and you see generally what they're going to be doing that year, but to, but as you go through the year, kind of like, you're not sure what's next, and you know, what the elements of learning are, even if it's not just the subject matter, you just always make up the reason why they had to study the things they didn't want to study. Um, it's like, oh, it's using your critical reading skills. But I, you know, it's, it's just the question around kind of what the ancillary is that are also part of that. And I think the reading and writing are really, really important, because I think those are the ones that, um, that are, you know, that could, that could come in, to your point, like multiple different types of books, and multiple different prompts, and multiple different, and so it's, it's good to know kind of how to read those with them, and think about them, and ask them the right questions. So, yeah, I think it is.
But, yeah, so even the, the reading behaviors, you know, even some of the learning behaviors, reading behaviors, having those forward-facing for parents or some things that we can.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's just something I've been hearing, uh, hearing parents ask me about, um, recently. And the last one, you triggered by your, by your, um, by your note, I, we did a, didn't we do a social studies project? Did we ever see the results? Was, was that right at COVID? I tried to remember.
Yes, so, yeah, I did present to the board, I don't remember exactly when, um, on the outcome of the tri-state social studies visit, and then everything ground to a halt. And to be completely honest, we have not done a lot on it, um, but, you know, we, like I said, last year was just peaking around above water. This year, I started to talk some more with, uh, Dan Chukin about, you know, what, which threads we can pick up. Certainly his department is looking, uh, carefully at, with all the talk about American history lately, and really how do they, how are they telling that story in a way that honors all different perspectives and voices? So, uh, but we have, we had the visit, they gave us the report, uh, we went through the report, identified the areas we wanted to work on, and then we didn't really get the chance to work on it much here.
Right, in, in light of, of current events of the last several years, I would say, this is a really timely, uh, moment to proceed with, with, with that work. So it's, it's great that you're starting to, to put that up on it.
Yeah.
Uh, I think the, the community appreciates the movement there. Um, I just wanted to say on a personal note, that when you were, when you were doing what you called your dissertation speech, that was, I, I understood it and it was fascinating. And I generally don't understand that, it was, that was a great explanation from a perspective, ideally, from you, right? Hearing how you, oh, uh, evaluate the effectiveness of professional development and why it can be so. Um, I stepped on you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, I just wanted to, I'm like, kind of, follow on what my leader was saying about the curriculum and, um, kind of having tools available with parents, you know? Someone just said to me, a parent just said to me a bit of, the other day, you know, I think the last two years have made it more obvious than ever that, you know, kids bring home to school and they bring school home. And so to have something like that, where the parents can support the, the work that the teachers are doing in the classroom, I think would be helpful. And the other comment I wanted to make is that it sounds like there's a lot of work being done to kind of bring, you know, like a common language to multiple departments, um, at the grade level, and look at the, you know, Science Twenty-One, and Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop. It seems that this might be an opportune moment to be able to find those things. I know that Science Twenty-One, if parents are interested in knowing what their kids are doing in Science Twenty-One, you can look online and find that. So, um, it seems like there might be some easy paths forward in some of these areas, at least, to give parents comfort that they know what their kids are doing when they're not together with them.
A lot of our programs also, they include, like, at the beginning of each unit, they include a, a sort of like a family letter, that, and many of our teachers I know take advantage of that. They'll send that home, like, we're starting a new math and focus unit, there's actually a parent letter that's included with that, um, that many, but not all of them will send home, this is a heads up, they call it a family connection, or, it's, depending on the program, it's called different things, but, um, some of our teachers take advantage of that.
Right, and, and I, and I think just to follow on that, like, people are looking for information in so many different places these days, but sort of also, like, finding out where is it that they want to get that information. So I think having it more of a place could be helpful.
Sure.
Any further questions from?
Actually, I have another one. Sorry. You know, we've had a lot of emphasis over the, over many years on elementary school curriculum. And I guess the question is, is there any, um, thinking about the high school curriculum at all, and changes that we want to make there, or, not changes, but evaluating whether or not we still have a curriculum that is kind of inappropriate for our.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and, um, certainly, the, some of the project-based and problem-based learning work that we've done with Jill has been focused on that. The challenge in high school is that it's still content-based, and so you have those silos of departments, many of whom have done really incredible work, either on curriculum and/or professional learning for their teachers. Um, but it has, it oftentimes sadly happens within those silos, uh, you know, it's hard to get kids, teachers, everyone, to think about the connections among disciplines, and not just what goes on in my discipline solely. So that, you know, there have been significant developments, I mentioned the work that the English department did, um, but yes, and, and so there are, it's a little bit different of a challenge, um, at the high school. I know, like, so last year, uh, we worked with all the departments to create these, uh, sort of here at a glance documents that outline essentially pacing guides for the whole year. We now have those for every course, uh, and that, and we knew that as sort of the first step towards documenting and then, um, revising the curriculum. Um, and key players in the work at the elementary schools have been reading teachers. Um, they have been absolutely phenomenal in, um, sort of guiding and, for lack of a better word, pushing us forward. We now have two great math teachers in the elementary schools, and the addition of the assistant principals at the elementary schools has been really instrumental. I talk to them all the time about curriculum in a way that I just couldn't speak with past principals, because they're too busy just running their buildings, to be honest with you. So we have people in place in the elementary schools who can kind of keep that flame alive. We're working, I think, now to understand how to kind of shift that model to work at EHS, and to understand who those people are, um, and what their role will be. So the great success we've had in the elementary school, um, we're trying to figure out what that would look like here at EHS, um, in a way that honors the, the great work that our teachers do, um, that, and that respects those sort of departmental, um, lines, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Come on, Mike, that's a sufficient double. I think of two phrases, scalability, how do we take what's worked really well for us to pass, models that have been successful at the elementary, how do we scale that up to the junior senior high school, and then integration? So how do we, how do we take that and integrate it into the fabric of what already exists here, in a way that will be successful, knowing that they are different places and are, are very different focused, um, in some ways? And so that's, it's the marriage of those two things, and I think, um, these are ongoing conversations that, that we've had, we've been this week, and continue to have often, and, and are, are always.
You, we're looking at that, Victoria. Oh, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. We'll welcome Paul Garafano, Director of Technology, um, to talk a little bit about technology and students, uh, and the interconnectedness of the two, and, and how it relates to teaching and learning as well.
And inflation.
Don't want to spoil it.
Sure, take your time. The Italian in me is going to have a tough time sitting down for this presentation. I'm going to want to stand and wave my arms around a lot, but, you know.
And you can even, since you were part of the OPI, right? When, when the foreign language teachers, I remember you were being interviewed in Italian.
Grab that lapel mic, yeah, start dancing around. Good evening, hello, hello, everyone in the Edgemont community tuning in from cyberspace or TV land, as like said. This is our 2022-23 technology budget proposal. I am Paul Garafano, Director of Technology and Information Systems and our Data Protection Officer. Great, you can go write the slide too, Brian, thanks. So I sometimes start off the budget presentation with these bubbles, which are emerging themes or initiatives in technology. And as I usually do, I look back at the previous year's budget proposal. And ironically, with the theme of, this year's theme of connecting learning to life as it pertains to technology, the themes didn't change that much from last year. We had so much emergence in technology and how we were using technology that web design and podcasting and streaming, even though they weren't new, they were really shuffled to the front and center in our classrooms. Students, last year, instead of using Oktag to do a poster, were creating a podcast. For, you know, out of sheer necessity for illustrating their understanding. A lot of our students were, were using web design for similar illustrations of understanding. Virtual learning and streaming were synonymous with, you know, the pandemic and how we were really facilitating instruction and learning. Technology, it really connects learners to the world around them and offers opportunities that might otherwise be available. If you can go to the next slide, Brian, please. So the idea of technology connecting learning to life, it's not true. Technology doesn't connect learning to life. Meaningful, intentional, purposeful use of technology connects learning to life. Instruction connects learning to life. The technology is, as we all know, it's just a conduit, right? It's the medium for what we use it for. And in walking around our buildings, as I try and do on a daily basis, I wanted to just kind of set the stage for, you know, our board members or community members who haven't had a chance to be in a classroom these past couple of years, because they're really supercharged with technology. Our, our faculty and our students have really embraced this, this mode of instruction and learning. And just to kind of give you a glance, you know, we have our, our accessible Wi-Fi that runs at 800 gigabytes, which even at the height of the pandemic, when we were streaming and we were in the hybrid learning environment, really held its own and kept the classes running and kept everybody connected outside of Edgemont and in Edgemont. All of our classrooms are now outfitted with our interactive Comedian panels, document cameras. Teachers have multiple devices. Some use a workstation like this, which is actually a Chrome base, which is a flat-screen Chrome device that's interactive. We have the traditional setups of PCs. Some of our teachers use Chromebooks to move around the room. We're basically a one-to-one school district. All of our students' grades five through 11 now have take-home devices. And all of our K4 classrooms have essentially a one-to-one setup. So not that they're using them all day, every day, but they're there, they're available for use. And the only deviation is in our art classrooms, where we have more specific technologies using the Mac products, MacBooks, iPads and iMacs. Great, next slide. So we've been talking about our goal components. And I've been fortunate enough to supervise, lead, facilitate the, the goal component three, which is connecting learning to life. And we've had some great conversations, we've made some great strides. We have a draft of an action plan. And a lot of our conversation and what, what I've really gravitated back to when it comes to technology and connecting learning to life, as I said, is that purposeful instruction, those powerful connections of learning, our students learning to the world around them, right? It's how we're using the technology that's so important. Next slide, Brian? I have just a few examples here. And this is really just a quick snapshot of a, a couple of units or learning activities where technology is being used to connect learning to life. In some of our lower elementary classrooms, with the facilitation of our K12 instructional technology specialist Andrea Nash. She works with our teachers. They have a unit where they're animating storytelling. And this is a, a unit where students create a short story about a life event that's important to them. And that could be something that happened to them or something that they were exploring. And they use these programs to bring their stories to life. And it's really remarkable, you know, how our, our, our first graders or our second graders are, are taking these ideas and these experiences and actualizing them through the Chromebooks, through the Google apps, using applications like Flipgrid and Seesaw and Book Creator. And they're, they're turning their learning into life. They're making these really deep connections with these experiences that they've had. We've got this great unit in our junior high school around classroom redesign, where the students are given a budget. Some of you might be familiar with this project, where they're, they're given a budget and they're allowed to choose a learning space. And they go through the budget process and design. And they have to create a transitional learning room. So they're, you know, they're researching mobile furniture and mobile devices. And it's really, you know, it, it, it's, it's the height of connecting learning to life. And then ultimately, they present those findings to a panel and then the Edgemont Schools Foundation. In fact, we have a couple of classrooms where the students have actually designed those rooms in our high school. And we have a project in our high school, one of our high school STEAM programs, which is industrial package and design. And again, the students are designing what would be real-world projects using all of these technologies as if they were in, you know, a graphic design studio or working for a company in that space. Next slide. So I mentioned our K12 instructional technology specialist Andrea Nash. Andrea works furiously across the district with all of our teachers at some point in time, some more than others at different times in the year. And, you know, some of the things that Andrea facilitates are flipped classroom instruction, where direct instruction doesn't happen during the instructional day. It happens sometimes in a more asynchronous environment after hours in a space like Google Classroom or in another virtual space. Andrea helped author our K12 Google Classroom benchmarks, which became so important when we went to virtual and then the hybrid learning environment last year, because a lot of teachers didn't know what they didn't know. So we were able to draft these classroom benchmarks. And a lot of teachers were able to identify strengths and weaknesses that they could, you know, get themselves up to, up to speed so they can facilitate Google Classroom more effectively. We're always working on digital literacy, information literacy. I'll speak a little bit about our STEAM integration and our STEAM program in a moment. And Mike had spoke about project-based learning, which is really always at the forefront. Our professional learning hasn't changed much from last year. We're still doing, doing a lot of our PD virtually. When we can meet in person, we do, usually it's in smaller groups. I will say that there has really been an emergence of peer-to-peer PD. A lot of our teachers, grade-level teachers or department teachers are working together, sharing best practices and, and, you know, maybe starting with Andrea, but then kind of turnkeying it with their grade-level colleagues or their department colleagues. And that's just been a tremendous development over the past couple of years. We're going to bring back our, hopefully, our in-person luncheon learns in much smaller groups. And of course, we have our Scarsville Teachers Institute and our Lyric Model Schools. And the Lyric is a component of Southern Westchester BOSI's that we use for a lot of services. And their model schools is a, what is mostly now a virtual professional learning space that a lot of our teachers take advantage of. Next slide. So the STEAM classroom, I think, really epitomizes the, the connecting learning to life. Earlier in the fall, we had an opportunity to have some of our STEAM teachers speak to the board and to the community about our emerging STEAM program. We've really made great strides in the past couple of years. And in a moment, we'll take a look at some of the courses that we have and a couple that we're, we're hoping to add. But the STEAM classroom is about not just the, the acquisition of skills, but the application of skills. And the curriculum that we use in our junior high school STEAM program, the Project Lead the Way curriculum, is all about connecting learning to life. From the learning activities to the projects, the students are really engaged in design thinking and team building and problem-solving and critical thinking, real-world problems. Next slide. And again, this is just a snapshot. You know, we, we really began our, our STEAM program, especially with the Project Lead the Way curriculum in grades five through eight. We're going to add a couple more units in our seventh and eighth grade next year. And, you know, the hope is, over the next couple of years, to continue to version out the STEAM program to our elementary grade levels and in our high school program. Several, subsequently this year, we're also offering a new technology plan. Every three years, New York State requires every public school district to author a technology plan. We were given an extra year because of the pandemic. It was supposed to be due last year, but they gave us an extra year. You can't see it here, but one of the, one of the additions is that lower bubble, thank you, Brian. The lower bubble there, the, the, one of the biggest developments or additions to the, to the new technology plan is a comprehensive instructional technology PV plan that the state is requiring every school district to have. Fortunately, we have a lot of professional development in place. We have a professional development committee that it seems most of the days, whether it's a conference day or a release time, technology is part of everything we do. So it was just kind of putting the pieces together and then really working closely with Andrea. And we have our Technology Action Plan Committee, which is comprised of teachers K through 12. We took a, a deep dive into where we're at and where we, where we want to be. And eventually, we'll bring that to the Professional Development Committee, kind of put the finishing touches on the plan. It goes to the Lyric, the Lyric signs off on it, and then it goes to New York State for approval. And that will get us through, you know, that'll be our, our plan for the next three years. And this is just an overview of where we're at. Every year, we're doing, you know, little bits of, of upgrades and development to our infrastructure. We're running over a 10-gigabyte network with an 800-megabyte bandwidth. And what that means is, you know, in a space like this, we're able to run 800 megabytes. To give you an example, most households are running at about 100 megabytes. So again, when we have a class of 20 to 25 students with Chromebooks out at the junior, senior high school, some of them have other personal devices out, one of the first things I do when I get in every morning is I look at the bandwidth from the day before, just to make sure we're okay. We do have an agreement with the Lyric that they also have, everybody's watching it, we have watchdogs. If we get to a point where we have to do an emergency increase, that gets through Verizon and through our best web connection, we can increase that literally overnight, but for now, we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Okay, so the proposed, proposed budget summary is a little misleading. Usually, the technology budget is about six to eight percent. Last year, it was about a 10% increase because we did have some unexpected needs. Why do I say it's misleading? We have a couple of leases on our new centralized printers, all-in-one printers, the printer-scanners-copiers. If you remember, we've removed all of our standalone classroom printers. And we've gone now, throughout the entire school district, we have cloud centralized printing. And in working with our account manager, Bosi, she strongly recommended that we take those line expenditures and centralize them through the district office. I don't know, Brian, if you want to.
I, I think you're saying, well, I think we, given that the service is more holistically looked at as like individualized and not school-based, we've shifted that whole line into the accounting in the, in the business office. And so we'll be absorbing that and we'll see that in the, in the line-by-line analysis later. So taking those costs out, which were significant, and we have savings through the approach that we're taking to both the centralized printing and copying. If we were to compare it to previous years, overall expenditure is going to be down. But we're just absorbing it and similar to the conversation with Mike and Shelley Klein's line, it's an accounting practice to get us in a place where it's a little bit easier to manage and there's only one person, me or whoever, in our office, looking at it, rather than Paul and I having to port it back for them.
Yeah. So that's why I say it is a little, little misleading, because you might say, well, you know, considering everything that we're doing, we need, you know, more technology, but don't worry, we're, we're getting all that technology as we, as we always do. Just kind of decompartementalizing it a little bit differently. Next slide, please. So this is a forecast expenditure breakdown. Similar to Mike, the majority of the technology budget are Lyric or Southern Westchester services. And, and the next slide breaks down what those services are. We have our STEAM expenditures, hardware expenditures. Our Chrome expenditures are increasing every year because we're getting to the point now where our initial Chromebooks of five, six years ago are starting to be needing to be recycled through. And minimal infrastructure costs for next year and our software inflation. Yes, software is going up. A lot of our vendors, our, our practices with Brent Cammerer, who's our database specialist and my right, and our CIO and my right-hand man on a day-to-day basis. Every fall, we email all of our vendors and we try and get an idea, much like Mike said, to try and get an idea of what the costs will be. And they all said, you know, they took a break over the last couple of years, knowing that school districts were doing the best they could to kind of get through things, but now, now the prices are going up. That's not to say that I still don't haggle, because I always try and, you know, get the most bang for the buck. But yes, a lot of our costs have gone up. Andrea and I did a, a very thorough inventory survey with all of our teachers to ensure that the applications that we are currently subscribing to are being used to the fullest extent. And we found that some are not. Some of them were really popular and, and useful or more useful during the hybrid learning environment or remote instruction, like a screencastifier where teachers were recording, literally recording their lessons, putting them up in classroom, and they're not doing that as much. Some are still sticking with the flipped model, but some are moving away from that. So an application like that, we're moving away from, but some other applications are emerging and some costs are going up. So doing the best we can to level that out. Next slide.
Yeah, and I'll just add, and I think the other thing that has happened through the pandemic is there was so much free or very cheap software delivered, as a great business practice, that has hooked people on practices. And so I, I'm really appreciative of the fact that Paul and Andrea have done that deep dive with teachers because they're, short of that, we could just be in many different areas, you know, kind of utilizing what came to people and, and. You know, kind of utilizing what came to people and 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 uh, supporting things that are being done by just a few. Because it was just so readily available. And so I I think that that deep dive has really helped us kind of hone in on on. The programs that are providing the greatest impact um, in our our most widely used by our instructional staff.
And I'll also say, and and also just in in frequent conversations and meeting with Mike and understanding. Again, what is the 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 connection, you know, what technology is gonna support our curriculum and our and and our instruction? And that's a huge component to those decisions. Um, here's a quick breakdown of our lyric services. Uh, four or five years ago, we went from a consortium district to a managed IT district and what that means is. We don't need to have experts in the verticals, the systems, the infrastructure, the software, the Google. They have that at the lyric. So the managed IT districts, when we run into a situation, are amazing technical support specialists. Just to give them a shout out. Uh, when they run into something that might take them a half a day to figure out, now they can go back to an expert at the lyric. In that managed IT service and kind of pass it off to them and they might have an answer like that for us. Um, we have our field support. We we have one uh, lyric. Technical support specialist in Evan Botinieri, works in Edgemont full-time. Um, and you know, again, we have networking services, model schools, backup recovery. Some of our software we purchased through the lyric. Um, to get a little bit of aid. And um, we have our installment purchase agreements to have a couple of slides on. So kind of the big ticket items for projects and expenditures next year, I said the Chromebooks. Our K, the the Chromebooks that are in K four, we've really moved the Chromebooks, the older Chromebooks. Down to the lower grades. But they they need to be replaced. Um, we're trying to do it through the operating budget and not have to. You know, wait for one of our um, installment purchase agreements to mature and do it in one lump sum. We're trying to do it piece-deeel over the next couple of years and. Quite frankly, the students need it because they're using the devices, putting a lot more demand on the devices. In fact, the only Chromebooks we're buying now, we went from a four gigabyte to an eight gigabyte. So we're 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 only buying stronger machines now because the students are putting. Such intense demands on the machines on a day-to-day basis. Um, our cloud-based learning applications, that's all the software that we have that we subscribe to. Um, our steam program, device repair parts, we don't. A a huge savings over the over the past two years is. We don't send our devices out anymore. We repair them in-house. Jonathan Espinoza. Who's one of our technical support specialists, became a Dell certified repair specialist. And not only does it save us money, it saves us time. The students can literally walk into our department offices. And Jonathan, if it's a broken screen or a keyboard, if he's available, he can swap it out right on the fly. And that really, um, you know, that just kind of keeps the workflow of our students and teachers going on a day-to-day basis. And cybersecurity, we have a comprehensive cybersecurity training program. That's ongoing, um, and you know, will continue to uh, to use that. Yeah.
Paul, can you, uh, maybe we can, uh, tag in this one, the. Um, implementation of of additional uh, supports. That helps support our cybersecurity uh, programs in-house. I know we've talked as as a board about. Um, insurance and and cybersecurity insurance and. Um, what we are doing right now is is looking forward to next year. As to how we can continue to implement additional practices in-house. That will help us both provide the safest environment that we can. But also uh, to be able to ensure that when we go out to secure policies in the future. That we have the criteria met that will uh, provide us the greatest opportunity to do so in a cost-effective way. So Paul and I have been working, uh, with the lyric, again, our closeies partners who keep coming up here tonight. Um, and are are looking at an implementation plan that's gonna help us start to address some of that this year. We're also budgeting for next year, which does come with some supply costs. Uh, for example, the most uh, the most significant item right now, there's two pieces to it. Is one is their software that that we would have to subscribe to. And then there is um, an actual like hardware, like a token. Uh, that would help allow multi-factor authentication for users. Um, you know, many of us go through multi-factor authentication through maybe your own own bank. Um, and maybe do it on your cellphone. We need to provide a service that can work independent of people's cellphones, you know, they call them will be keys.
Yeah.
Will be fobs, will be keys. That provide unique codes and access codes, kind of help with that. So that is also embedded here in in our uh, plans for next year. And it's uh, we see as one of those costs that has potentially enough savings. Or or at least is eating into some of the additional costs that we know we. Take on in areas outside of the technology budget, namely in insurance. Um, that by spending a little here, we might be able to reduce costs somewhere else as well.
Yeah. And and really the two. Sort of the two factors are the, is the hardware for multi-factor authentication. But it's the people component, um, that that training is so important. Um, we've already gotten, we had a short bulleted list and. Uh, they were asking, do we run phishing scams, which we do. Sorry, teachers, we do run through the background, safe. Uh, but our teachers have been really vigilant about, you know, um, um, watching the training modules. Participating in the phishing scams, because sometimes if they accidentally click, it says, ah, you took the bait. They'll call me, I'm so sorry, is everything okay? Everything's okay, that's why we're doing it. Practice it, you know, in a safe environment. So um, yeah, on those two fronts, we're we're doing the best we can to. Make sure that Edgemont moves forward in the in the safest way possible for everybody. Um, so uh, and and lastly, we have two installment purchase agreements, which are loans that we take out. Through ultimately New York state, but through um, Bosie's. Um, one which we took out in twenty nineteen, which was for a purchase of. Uh, Promethean panels and Chrome boxes and Chromebooks. Um, that's going to mature in twenty twenty-three. And the other one we took out last year. Which was for outfit the rest of our classrooms with the interactive. Promethean panels and and boy, good thing we did, because the teachers that didn't have them. They 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 let us know, so there, everybody's happy. We have Promethean boards, uh, panels across the district. Um. And that's the technology budget proposal. I look forward to any questions or comments you might have.
Martha? Okay, um, which would be, thank you. On the screen where you said. You have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for Chromebooks that we are buying outright? How many Chromebooks is that?
Uh, at about three hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Brian, you're good math.
I got five hundred, like a stereo. Thank you.
I was going right to my calculator.
Yeah, I was, I was too.
So and that, just to give you an idea, that's. You know, at most classrooms get anywhere, that's for lower elementary, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-three, twenty-four Chromebooks. So however many grade levels that ends up being, the goal is over the next couple of years to refresh. All of K four, so that'll that'll do a nice jump.
It's about forty-five percent of our students.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Okay, um, by taking printing out of your budget. What was your savings and where did it go?
So there technically weren't any savings when you're saying that.
Well, to your budget, you move something from your line item to this.
Right.
So that means you had savings in your budget, because your budget went up two percent.
Compared to last year, it it went down from ten percent to two percent, but literally the 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 difference. In that percentage was the migration of the centralized printing from technology to the district budget.
So.
So there weren't really savings, it was just a reallocation of expenditure.
So I I understand where you're going. So you're speaking about the increase of seven percent last year.
Right.
Year-to-year increase, now two percent. But the actual dollar budget, so it's funny how I wrote this out, I knew that question was gonna come up and I haven't prepared. In a different folder, that's not true right now. So, well, what what the actual, like, I was trying to think, what the actual cost is associated with the printing.
So say you say fifty thousand dollars, right? Fifty, the 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 printing would normally cost fifty thousand dollars in your budget, but you moved it over there, so you don't have that expenditure in this budget.
Right.
But but you've clearly spent forty-eight thousand because, or fifty thousand, because your budget went up two percent. So you you spent fifty thousand somewhere else. Where did it go? What increased in your, I othered the software.
Uh, we, okay, lyric services typically go up anywhere from two to four percent and that's fifty. I think it was fifty-seven percent of the technology budget.
Right.
And again, that's not written in stone. We get our, what's probably RFS, the request for services at the end of January.
Uh-huh.
But our account manager tells us to. Any human-related services, put a two percent increase to like the the lyric field support.
Okay.
Two percent, anything technical in nature, like. Uh, we get all of our our um, internet and our um, backup. That's typically a four percent increase.
Okay.
So that's really the majority of the increase. And then you factor in a little bit of the software, you know, some of our vendors have increased their prices. And that's really where the rest of the savings went to.
Okay, and then one more question. Uh, if our eight hundred gigabyte need need to be increased, you wake up and you say, oh, today's the day. Um, what's that cost difference? And is that factored in?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. It's not huge. Um, because we did it right bef- right when the pandemic, where when we came back to school in person or in hybrid. We went from five hundred to eight hundred. Because we we ran some preliminary tests and we spiked. And we knew that we had to go, we didn't know if we were gonna have to go to a gigabyte. So we left it at eight hundred. But I would say if we had to go from eight hundred to a gigabyte, it would be under five thousand dollars annually. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Sure, those services have come down a lot over the years.
Right.
I can attest to that. Yeah, just the numbers that you're saying compared to when I was sitting in that seat, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Whereas a big deal to go from one point five to four megabytes.
Right.
Tens of thousands of dollars.
They're just given megabytes and gigabytes away now, and it's all achievable, because it's through Bosie's.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, so my question, you know, this whole two percent, twenty-two percent, everything looks very deceptive, right? Everything has, so. So thanks for explaining all those numbers. My question for you is that, given that your budget is much larger, how do you handle variances when they happen? Because as we said, you know, Jen said earlier, really inflationary environment. So just how's the process of any kind of uh, variances managed? As a budget manager of technology?
Well, I think we can all say going into the budget preparation. We need to be at two percent. We're su- somewhere Sue Sherpen just smiled. Sometimes that's unrealistic, so then it it it's a needs assessment and um. It could have been possible that instead of a hundred and fif- instead of five hundred Chromebooks, we might have needed a thousand Chromebooks this year. And. You know, maybe we would have had to then prioritize. Other areas that we would have maybe had to forego for next year. Maybe there would have been. A software application or a service through lyric or southern west books, southern westchester Bosie's. That we either would have had to cut in half or further negotiate. But it really boils down to what are the primary needs for the district and um, for next year. Having Chromebooks accessible, reliable, accessible Chromebooks is really paramount.
And uh, and this BM Golia question, I'm, this is my fourth year on the board and I learned the full form of Bosie's today. Can I know the full form of lyric?
Good, the. Oh, uh, Lower Hudson Regional Information Center.
Thank you.
Yeah, it only took me like five or six years to remember.
Thank you.
It took a while to realize it wasn't spelled like L Y R I C.
Yeah.
No, Les, I thank you for asking that question about the, and I think the word that comes out of me is prioritization, right? So both in the budget development and then also in our spending. Because those are really two different things. We, you know, build a budget now in the spring and winter time. To that's supposed to carry all the way through the end of next school year. Um, and we. Go back twenty-four months ago, do we know what our needs were then? For what was to occur the next few years? It's not always the case. Uh, and so I'm really appreciative of of all of the budget builders, to give these two in in developing something. Um, that doesn't require a whole lot of refinement before we came here today. Um, I have not had to push back and say, you know, we need to lower this and and. Where can we find those those uh, areas to really push back on right now? They could do a great job of addressing the needs and really thinking about what will impact students. Most in the in the coming years. And then, you know, we do need regularly as well to look at what our spending plan is right now. Uh, where are our expenditures and our encumbrances for this year? Do we feel as though the budget that was allocated is sufficient for that? Uh, where do we have other areas where we're seeing savings or a surplus? That we might be able to shift to, to do some repurchasing? So for example, we're starting to get to that phase now. In the year where we might need to look and say, we have planned expenditures for Chromebooks. If we anticipate a surplus in another area where we can allocate some of that now. Uh, we might do so to offset and balance next year as well.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna ask the inflationary question, because between your, the heads-up and and Malicia's question, I think you you. Answered it more than enough. Um, I do have. Little thing I circled, um, because I I thought it was fantastic was the, you talked about the emerging uh, peer-to-peer professional learning. And I I think that's fantastic, both in terms of um. Giving the teachers ownership of some of these things. Availability, I mean, simply having someone in the building. You know, in the next to the next classroom as opposed to having to wait for the consultant. Um, do you see that also potentially down the road of area for cost savings? If we have in-house people who are. Experts in these areas as opposed to having to. Go out and get outsiders.
Yeah, potentially, you know, I I think part of the reason really, as I said, was was out of necessity. Um. When you need something, when a teacher needs something in an instant. Andrea is not always available or I'm not always available and and because technology or instructional technologies is so prevalent. People are more readily able to share best practices. And I think that, yes, it's cost savings in that. Instead of, yes, maybe bringing in additional consultants or subscribing to other. Um, consortiums or programs where we would have to pay for PD. We can, we can do that further in-house. Um. One, we were talking recently in our professional development committee, one of the most successful. Um, conference days that we had was um. It was, what did we call it, Mike, where everybody was like a choose-your-own?
Oh, the unconference.
The unconference, and there were a lot of different things happening that day, but there were a lot of technology or there were some technology best practices. And that kind of gave a a window into. What was to come and what is happening now, which is a lot of peer-to-peer professional learning, definitely around instructional technology. So yes, I do see potential cost savings in the in the in the long term.
Awesome.
Um, this is more just a confirmation coming from Mike, so we will later on in the budget process. Drill more details, so we can actually, because this is a net of all. A number of different things going on, so look more like. What things went up, what things went, and then went down, just to give a better sense of what's driving. Again, that's the difference, because in the end, there isn't much of a difference, but sort of how we got to this point relative to last year.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, with that line, my question's line analysis. Trends and things, yeah. There's, there'll be some descriptions that, you know, itemize. Most cases, you know, the the most expensive items. Um, and and most uh, representing the largest chunk of each of those lines. Great, thank you for that presentation.
Thanks so much. Yeah, I had just a quick question around um. Chromebook investment. Because I am noticing as I'm further and further uh, up. In the grade that more and more of these kids have their own um, devices.
Yeah.
And yet I still have a bunch of Chromebooks in my house, which have not been returned, I promise. So I'm just wondering, like, do we have usage data on how many of these Chromebooks are actually still being used by the students? As they kind of end up in the middle school, high school area and. Usability of those Chromebooks? I mean, I think that part of the reason why Mike transitioned is because. The delay, you know, to your point, the processing power, some of those old books were not, were not quite as. Um, as strong, so I'm just wondering, if you think about the program. What is the real lifecycle of a Chromebook? What is the lifecycle of a user here of a Chromebook versus a more substantive computing? Tool, um, et cetera, so.
Uh, much like the uh, the social studies tri-states right before the pandemic. We were ready, we we have a one-to-one committee, Alec in fact sits on it. And we decided that we were going to, when students got to tenth grade. Give them the choice of keeping their Chromebooks through senior year. Or returning them, but if they kept them. It it was on the onus of the student to maintain the device, because. We know that the majority of our eleventh and twelfth graders. Because we know that the majority of our eleventh and twelfth graders end up getting their own devices.
Right.
So, but the pandemic hit and it was, we need to get Chromebooks available to anybody and everybody. So now that we're coming out on the other side. I suspect that next year we will reenact that. And that was also another reason why we are now only buying eight gigabyte Chromebooks. So that they are strong through tenth grade.
Yeah.
Because any device, uh, most devices, like a home, a television at home, four, five, six years. It starts, you know, it, it starts slowing down and newer technologies come out. That seems to be the wheelhouse from fifth grade to tenth grade. And then if the student wants to keep it, they can keep it. But you, you know, the onus is on them um, for the upkeep. And that's not saying if they can't connect to the wifi. But if they, you know, need to put a new processor in or the screen cracks. Um, and that seems to be the trend in a lot of districts that fourth or fifth through tenth grade. And then when students get um, into eleventh and twelfth grade, they typically get their own devices.
Yeah, I might recommend like surveying kids in ninth and tenth grade because what I'm hearing, at least. They are for other purposes. They are acquiring devices and could use those devices. Because they do have more. They, they are more powerful.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think, I, it's a great program. I think we should, absolutely should do, we should do it, especially in places where we do want to make sure that we manage the students' access. And that we're not using random apps and things like that. Um, but I also, I'm wondering what the um, enforcement is of personal devices in some of these um, younger grades here. So seventh, eighth grades and whether or not people are bringing devices.
Yeah, again, pre-pandemic, we didn't allow seventh, eighth and ninth graders to use, use their own devices. Um, but because the demand, quite frankly, we had a shortage. We had an inventory shortage. Cause we had to start the, we started a loner program for families who've had students who were learning remotely. So we put a suspension on that. Um, I suspect next year that will come back into play. That's all students grades five through nine. Um, will have to use our Chromebooks while in district. And then in tenth grade, there's a little bit of wiggle room. And then again, as you move into eleven and twelve grade, they typically um, start to bring in their own devices. But we have a very organized asset management of our devices. Um. We're constantly monitoring usage, whether it's through the Google Admin Console or through our asset management tool. And I would say our frequent flyers are, in our offices for repairs and upgrades, firmware upgrades are the ninth and tenth graders. And we do the best we can to, you know, keep those devices running for as long as possible. And sometimes we do take them and we'll give them kind of like a refurbished, but a higher functioning device.
Well, um, I'm just wondering, two things occurred to me in um, that conversation was going on. Um, one is when we take Chromebooks out of circulation. Are we using some of those for parts or replacement of the issues that arise that kids bring in?
When we can, yeah, when we can. But sometimes those devices that are coming out of circulation. Are coming out for a reason that they're just out of circulation. But if we can, yes, use a screen.
Well, that's.
Or keyboard or trackpad, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we recycle and refurbish. And even when they get recycled or when they get retired. They go, I think, uh, uh, and meeting in December, I spoke a little bit more about how we go through the sustainable method of. Recycling those devices for parts and if, if they're a working device, go to another school or organization that's in need of that device.
And then the other question is, um. So at eleventh grade forward, if a kid keeps the Chromebook, they are responsible. Do we have a, a program in place to help kids who may be keeping it because it's an affordability issue for the family?
Absolutely. If there are circumstances where that's the case, we will do everything we can to make sure that. Any student that needs a device for those reasons will have a working, reliable device.
And do we make that clear to the kids when they come in as opposed to?
Yes, we had a whole letter drafted and everything. We were ready to move into that program and then everything came to the screeching hall. So I suspect towards the end of this year, beginning of next year, with the, this committee will get together one more time to kind of. Refresh our notes and we'll send out that communication.
Uh, I often hear that actually Chromebook are more secure to viruses, spans, because, you know, that they're restrictive on what websites you can go. Whereas the student laptops are much more open structured. So in some sense, having Chromebook till that students become mature enough to kind of know what to do. It's actually better to have them use Chromebook rather than kind of use their own laptop. So I completely support that the own laptop should be a policy, which should come much later in the school for more material.
Yes, there, there, there are more compact um, reliable. Um, devices. As far as safety goes though, any device, if you're in our network, if you're on the consortium network. Everybody goes through the same filter.
Oh.
So even if a student does have their own device, they wouldn't be able to access adult content or something that typically would be blocked by our filters. Unless they had a VPN and wants to go to VPN, it's, yeah, kind of radical.
Right, but the one place where, but Chrome OS is a more secure OS than the other mainstream consumer OS.
Yes.
Start. I mean, there may be a few hypothetical ones out there, but just don't see viruses out in the wild that actually infect Chrome OS.
Can I just say something about that for a second? Because I think this has just been, I mean, you're committing me, I think it's a really important component to think about, which is that. That's fine. And we should have, if you want to have ninth graders on Chromebooks, that's totally fine. And I'm, I'm in support of that policy. It can't be the Chromebook they got when they were in fifth grade. Like, technology deteriorates. They need it more than even, my son sat in his Chromebook trying to submit a paper for half an hour. So it has to be that if we're gonna, if we're gonna force the kids who need it most and who are using it for kind of higher order types of activities. You gotta give them the high performing Chromebooks. So I think just in terms of the way we think about the life cycle of a Chromebook and the life cycle for these kids of. Like, my kids are still sitting with the same Chromebooks they have when they first got them, and they're not operating well anymore. And now is when they're using them most. Uh, and when there'd be possibility of not doing the thing, which is like not submitting the paper, it's not possible. Yeah, we bought our own consortiums. Yeah, so that, that's what I mean. Like, I think it's great that we want them to use it. Like, I'm totally in favor of that policy. We have to think about how we distribute.
And again, that's why in, in hindsight and the technology, the technology and our need has just grown.
Yeah.
Exponentially over the last couple of years. Had you told me three or four years ago that we were, our students were gonna be on a device all day. Streaming, you know, in virtual um, learning environments. I would have said, oh, well, there's no way that, you know, a four gigabyte Chromebook's gonna be able to do that. We weren't doing that.
Right.
So that's why we're only buying the eight gigabytes. But yes, that's why I said our, our ninth and tenth graders are frequent flyers. And we try and communicate to the students and to the teachers of those ninth and tenth graders that. However small the hiccup may seem, come to our offices so that we can at least take a look. We'll never let a student leave. With a Chromebook that's not functioning. The Chromebook that takes a half an hour to load a paper is not going to stay with that student. We would get them a device that, so, um, yeah.
You'll be seeing.
Yeah, sure, send them our way, send them our way.
But what about? What about when you get the updated eight? Giving them to the older kids and then taking those. Ones that the older kids have and giving them to the younger kids who maybe don't need, or do they also need eight gigabytes?
Yeah, we thought about that too. It, it, it disrupts the cycle of the one-to-one program. Um, because if we then started collecting and the precedent was. Fourth graders going at the fifth graders, it's the beginning of the one-to-one program. And it's sort of like the initiation into that program. They get their nice new shiny Chromebook. Um. And then to disrupt that and, you know, start taking five, four, five-year-old Chromebooks and, and moving them back and then take the new ones. Then we're, you know, giving a brand new Chromebook to a ninth grader, then the whole concept of. Well, you know, we're gonna end the one-to-one program in tenth grade, kind of goes out the window. It's a whole.
Got it, yeah.
And again, that, it's not saying that it's not a possibility. We have this one-to-one device committee and we're gonna meet again. And we're gonna talk about all of the possibilities and opportunities for the program, for sure.
Okay. Can I suggest some data gathering for that? Because I think it would be interesting to know of the ninth grade and tenth grade families. Of seventh grade and eighth grade families, potentially when they're thinking about purchasing a device for their students. Cause I actually think it's, it's feasible for us to buy a whole bunch of Chromebooks if families are planning to buy devices. Not that we shouldn't have Chromebooks. And if they're more secure, I, I guess that's okay. But my kids are at home using their computers, not their Chromebooks. And, and so I just, I wanted to just be, and, and we're not doing, we're learning that, but I don't want to like, you know, test the waters and now all of a sudden. Anyway, I just think fiscally, we should make sure that we're not buying lots of Chromebooks that are then aging out of being useful. And sitting in somebody's house. Um, and instead of like, you know, circulating them.
Yeah, if we were gonna revisit and, and purchase new devices for older students. We would definitely do a comprehensive.
Yeah.
Survey and find out who's using what, what their plans are. And the fact that we did that, something to that effect. Prior to everything happening. Um, but that data obviously now is, is, is out of date. We, we're, we're gonna need to do that again and, and collect that information for sure.
I mean, I'm one hundred percent support, right, for doing it and analyzing usage and all those sorts of things. And just be a little. Careful about assuming, and that, that, I'm picking your, your example now because of the, you know, something taking a half an hour to submit. May or may not be the Chromebook. I mean, one of the reasons Chromebooks work.
Paper might have been really bad, I don't know.
It's like the, the Google recall, giving you some time to think about. Uh, but. When you think about most of what you're doing with the Chromebooks is document management, their webpages, right? So they're, they don't need to be. Caveats, high-powered machines. That's why in the art department, they do have IMAX, things like that. They do need things, that do need to do rendering, things that need a lot of computational power and memory. Um. I mean, I still have a Chromebook from six years ago that works well for a lot of things. Where they do fall down is, I mean, the older kids, they suddenly have forty-three tabs open. Now you have an issue with limited memory.
That's what I mean, yeah.
That's why I say nine times out of ten, when a student does come to our department offices. I, I've yet to see something that one of the guys can't. Clean, run a firmware update or do something to, to increase the performance substantially. So, um. And it could be just, you know, also our department doing a better job communicating to the students with older devices that. Don't forget, we're here. No, you know, hiccup is small enough. You need to come to us so we can help you out.
You'd definitely be overwhelmed in the next couple of weeks.
They're used to be overwhelmed. That's what we do.
You don't want a kid who's like, oh my goodness, the world is going to end right now because I've been killing myself on this paper and I can't get it.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important when we balance those, is that what IMAX, we talk about, but they're different, they're used for different purposes. And I think a lot of students who purchase their own device, whether it be MacBook or more higher, uh, higher powered PC. They're using it for different things than document management, word processing, spreadsheets, working off webpages, using collaborative learning spaces. So I think, you know, we need to set our expectations. So what do we want students to do with that? And what can we provide them to support that? Like, one interesting way to look at it is the cost per student, per year that we're spending on a Chromebook. If they're using it for roughly five years and costs roughly three hundred dollars, it's sixty dollars a year. For a device that connects them to the internet, gives them access to a different world than the classroom. That price point um, is what has allowed us in other schools to become one. Yeah, um, you think of the schools that adopted one-to-one practices. One was a neighbor against New Jersey years, it was twenty years ago. Was, it was um, apple products. And that, that expense, I can't even imagine what it was at that time. Um, the reason we've been able to help the classrooms and students is because that price point is so low. And I think we have to think, what's our expectation at that price point? A few years ago, um, we were still supplying students with TI eighty-four graphic calculators in high school. When I left uh, teaching in the department, those were a hundred and twenty dollars a piece on state contracts. When I think about what, although they're excellent and, and great tools, but what that provides a student at that cost versus what we're getting. Uh, with access to wealth of information and connectivity. Um, it, it has been something that has really saved us. Yeah. And I echo everything that I'm hearing because I, this. See, I'm, I'm not on my Chrome device. I've chosen to bring our, our Dell device for this purpose. Because I think that running a virtual meeting off of it with all of this connected to it is prudent to be done on a different device. Um, and I think that that's the valid point.
I'm glad Victoria is using Chrome.
Just feeding headwork.
Different task.
Anybody else? Well, thank you.
I think just to, to put a, a, an end note on it all, I think Alec part a couple of times that I, I agree. I think this certainly not a deep dive tonight. Plenty of opportunities down the road. Didn't want us to get too lost in those details if refinements don't come. I think we just have too many unknowns and it's early in the process for us to, to do that. So rather than say. We'll just save our, if you jump, we presented some of that deep dive, we'll, we'll hold off on those. Thank you all for the questions and comments. And we'll follow up on the ones that, that are outstanding.
Um, I, I didn't announce before, but there are no comments from the public on the, uh, on the spreadsheet document that we have. Um, and we now move on to the consent agenda. Um, I would ask if you could pull out uh, I, five and seven.
Sure, like to uh, ask the board's approval of key personnel. Numbers one through ten, H students, number one. Personnel, one through ten. H students, number one. And I, business, number one through five.
Four, four and six.
Four, take four and six. Do I have a motion? Alec first, Monica second, all in favor? unanimous. Um, like to, you can take five and seven together if you want. Is it five and seven or five and six? Five and seven, on I, five and seven. For the KID therapy session? And we. Trevor and the, oh yeah, I thought we were gonna be the. Nevermind. Oh, you wanted to pull that one out. What numbers did you just say? We want to take out four separately, right? We want to take. Five, five and seven, five and seven, okay. So I would like to ask the board's approval of numbers one through three. And number six. Monica, second, Malish, all in favor? unanimous. Okay, so now we'll go one at a time. Think not number four, like to ask the board's approval. Uh, for the authorization to enter into a contract with Speak Sobriety LLC for student assembly's motion. Monica first, Alec second. Do we have any discussion? So I'd like to actually thank uh, the ninth grade team of teachers. As well as Mitch Shapiro, Lauren Moore, Michelle Greenwald and the high school administrative team. Uh, they have been um, meeting with the ninth grade teachers and talking about the needs of students in terms of making good decisions. Importance of making good decisions, healthy decision-making, as well as um. Use of alcohol and substance abuse. So they reached out to local school districts in terms of um. Consultants that they have worked with and uh, Speak Sobriety, things highly recommended. Uh, they're going to work primarily with the ninth grade, as well as the parents of ninth graders. And uh, they were going to start with. We, we don't know if it's going to be in a person or somewhere, but the thought is um, by this time to split them into two. So that each half of the ninth grade would be in an assembly and then they would do breakout by classes. So that it'd be smaller discussion. So that it'd be smaller, especially in the parent, parent groups as well. And, um, really just for ninth graders, when you think about their past two years. They went from being seventh graders and now got thrown into a high school environment. And I think it's been difficult for parents as well because the parents want them to socialize. So maybe their wedding was the same, but maybe it wouldn't have pre-pandemic. So I did, it just sounds like a, a great opportunity for the ninth grade students and, and their parents. And Victoria, you said there is a mental health component in this as well. So I, I would say too, in terms of the decision-making, yeah, I'd say that the mental health component was also something that I know, um, the school psychologists and counselors. Asked about, um, when they, they interviewed and were looking for people and asked. So yeah, thanks Judith for bringing that. Uh, so all in favor of this? Unanimous. Um, and then five and seven are the same. You want to take this together? So, um, ask the board's approval of number five, the authorization to enter into a contract with giving retriever. And a therapy sessions and number seven, authorization to enter into a consultant contract with Stacy AS Williams.
Motion approved, Monica, second, Malash. Uh, I have a request just that, um, the language on each of these be finalized and clarified as we have already discussed.
Yes.
Okay, and with that, all in favor? And this, um, the schedule of meetings, um, that follows, uh, January 18th is the next meeting, but it's an executive session only. At, uh, 4:00 PM. Um, and then, uh, the next full board meeting will be Jan, January 25th. Um, here in the Deianics, starting the public session at 8:00 PM. And the following one will be February 8th, also here in the Deianics at, the public session starting at 8:00 PM. And with that, you're, oh, sorry, yes.
I just want to make a remark. So end of September, we have deliberations in the board. Should we continue in person or go virtual? And we said that if we go virtual and we come back, we want to have a fantastic setup. And I must say, I'm so delighted with this setup to have a, a camera which is not operated by anyone. It goes to the speaker, when the speaker speaks, it's all automatic. We have our own microphones. So thank you, Victoria, thank you, Brian. For the lead. Uh, presentation for the community to have a good experience, so thank you for that.
And we'll be together again, thank you, Malash, okay.
Thanks.
And with that, we are adjourned, thank you very much.